Thank you, spokesperson Matengi. Ladies and gentlemen of the media, we are here today to present a statement on the outcomes of the National Executive Committee from the twenty-fifth to twenty-eighth October twenty twenty-four. The African National Congress successfully convened a special session of the National Executive Committee from twenty-fifth to twenty-seventh October twenty twenty-four at the Beth Wood Hotel and OR Tambo Conference Centre in Phuket. The special session was strategically timed to coincide with commemorating the hundred and seventh anniversary of the path of our longest-serving President General, Comrade Oliver Regional Tambo. The movement he served all his life paid tribute to his enduring legacy on Sunday, twenty-seventh October twenty twenty-four. The day began with a solemn church service followed by a wrath-laying ceremony in honour of Comrade Oliver Regional Tambo, acknowledging his role as selfless leader, a decisive freedom fighter, and the ANC's chief diplomat who gave his whole life to the liberation of our people. To this extent, we want to congratulate the hosting region of the African National Congress and the municipality of Aguru Leni in Hauteam Province, and the provincial Executive Committee of the ANC in Hauteam for the successful hosting of this important event. This fitting tribute was concluded by the OR Tambo memorial lecture, delivered by President Cyril Ramaphosa, who emphasised on Tambo's unwavering commitment to unity, ethical leadership, revolutionary morality and discipline, the values that continue to guide the ANC today. The OR Tambo commemorations were further marked by the national launch of the ANC Foundation Course for All Members, a core project in the Renewal Programme. This course is a declaration of our dedication to fostering a movement grounded in disciplined and well-trained cadres and leaders for challenges and responsibilities of our historic mission. Together, these initiatives strengthen our efforts to ensure that the ANC remains both responsive to the needs of South Africans and reflects the values and principles of our four peers. The special session of the NEC began with a moment of respect and commemoration for the lives of our recently departed comrades, stalwarts and friends. This include Comrade Pravind Gordon, Tito Mboweni and Member Tsimadja, three exceptional servants of the ANC who have passed away since our last NEC meeting. We extend our heartfelt condolences to their families and to all South Africans who have lost their loved ones during this period since the last meeting of the National Executive Committee. In the next coming week, we will have a memorial service for Comrade Tito Mboweni. The NEC rigorously engaged the reports before it addressing the domestic and global balance of forces, alongside diagnostic insights onto the state of our organisation and the integrity committee's recommendations. Our collective reflections have informed our strategy to protect the ANC through strict adherence to renewal efforts, strengthen branch capacity and intensify public accountability for our representatives and leaders at all levels of our structures, from the branches to the NEC. On the diagnostic report, the NEC received the initial iteration of the diagnostic report on the state of the organisation, which builds upon two previous reports presented by the Secretaries General Khalima Mutlante in nineteen ninety-eight and Kwehda Mandasha in twenty seventeen. These reports provided the foundation for subsequent NGC and National Conference Resolutions, as well as NEC decisions and regulations on organisational development, discipline and renewal. This draft report presented to the NEC remains a work in progress and will be enriched through visits to various provinces and engagements with regions and branches by the Secretary General and a team led by the Organising Department. The final report is slated for presentation to the National General Council in twenty twenty-five. The special NEC deliberated on the probing question of whether recent national and provincial election results reflect a judgment on the ANC's success in fulfilling its historic mandate for a united, non-racial, non-sexist, democratic, equal and prosperous society. The third-year review report highlights an unparalleled record of transformation in any post-colonial society. However, many of our people did not turn out to vote for the ANC, to the extent that it can no longer form a government independently. The special NEC engaged in extensive discussions on the potential drivers behind this electoral outcome from the perspective of individual membership and leadership. The diagnostic exercise addressed the extent to which we have projected or failed to project the aspirations of the masses. It acknowledged the importance of ethical conduct as reflected in the establishment of the Integrity Commission, tasked with upholding ethical standards among members and leaders of the movement. This commitment to integrity directly impacts perceptions of whether the organisation genuinely represents the aspirations of our people. This diagnostic exercise, to be further led by the Secretary General and the Organising Department, will include visits to all structures across the country, focusing not only on individual integrity but also on the integrity of branches and regions. The NEC-led diagnostic will contribute to the necessary prognosis for the future. As outlined in the diagnostic report, this process is not about reinventing the will but about implementing existing policies drawn from foundational documents such as the Freedom Charter, Ready to Govern, Document the RTP Through the Eye of the Needle, National Conference Resolutions and government programmes like the IDPs at local level and the NDP at national level. Equally, it calls for adherence to both the ANC constitution and the constitution of South Africa. We have a truly committed crop. We need to examine whether we have a truly committed crop of activists and cadres. In pursuance of this resolution, all members will need to write a motivation letter and state why they should be re-accepted as returning members or accepted as new members into the ANC branches. On the party building and branches, the NEC noted that there has been a decline in the membership of the ANC due to the deserters and disruptors. And we acknowledge that the revolution is swift once and impure load has been offloaded. The Renewal Programme aims to ensure that the ANC pages and strengthens itself as part of ensuring we have a fully, truly committed crop of activists and cadres. In pursuance of this resolution, all members will need to write a motivation letter and state why they should be re-accepted as returning members or accepted as new members into the ANC branches. The NEC recognises the urgent need to confront complacency regarding the state of our organisation. The focus must shift to revitalising the ANC at its core, beginning with our branches, which are the basic units of our movement. The decisions made during the fifty-fourth and fifty-fifth national conferences aimed at organisational renewal must now be translated into concrete action. Branches are crucial to our effectiveness as a movement, serving as a vital point of contact for community members seeking information, support and assistance. The NEC reaffirmed its commitment to building authentic branches dedicated to a national democratic revolution, rejecting transactionalism and the culture of buy membership and placing self-interest above the organisation. Politically vibrant and impactful branches must replace hollow structures that lack standing or genuine engagement within their communities. Our branches, as defined by the ANC constitution, must fulfil their role in shaping South Africa's path forward, not serve as platforms for careerists or sexual interest. The NEC resolved that all members, particularly NEC members, must take an active role in rebuilding branches over a dedicated twelve-month period. This entails empowering our members and supporters to ground the ANC within their communities, thereby disseminating the core values and principles of our movement. In doing so, we will not only foster unity and cohesion within our ranks but also restore public confidence in the ANC and reverse our declining electoral support. The NEC reaffirmed that every leader must embody the spirit of an organiser, an activist, committed to the immediate task of the national democratic revolution. The NEC further resolved that branches should focus on becoming vibrant, activist hubs with clear action programmes that align with the goals of the national democratic revolution. This includes ensuring access to affordable services, promoting the upkeep of public infrastructure and fostering healthy community environments through sports, arts and culture initiatives. Moreover, ANC branches must engage actively with local government and civil society, creating clean, green communities with spaces for children to thrive. We urge our branches to collaborate with school governing bodies to guarantee quality education and mobilise parents to support their children's academic commitments. Working alongside community health practitioners, branches should identify and assist vulnerable families, thereby contributing to holistic community welfare. The NEC welcomes the improvements to the membership management system which will help mitigate practices that degrade our organisational integrity and accountability. On the foundational course for all members, the special NEC welcomed the progress being made in political education and commended how this would further the organisational renewal agenda. In the same breath, the NEC expressed gratitude for the contributions of the Veterans League, particularly Comrades Mike Maharaj, Sue Rabkin and Paolo Giordano in conceptualising the ANC Foundation course modules. The NEC also acknowledged the ongoing support of Comrade Khalima Mutlante in his various roles, including as head of the Electoral Committee and Chair of the Board of the OR Tambo Political School, among others. Furthermore, the ANC extended its appreciation for the continued support and political guidance from President Mbeki, whose invaluable insights continue to enrich discussions on the political affairs of the ANC and our country. Renewal is not limited to the reforms we are making to our structures. It is a moral and intellectual undertaking we can refer to as the RTP of the soul. The NEC highlighted that effective branches require members and leaders who are both ideologically grounded and ethically committed to our mission. It is in this context that we are proud to announce that we have officially unveiled the ANC Foundation Course. This course, which will be mandatory for every ANC member, public representative and leaders, begin with members of the NEC, is a decisive step towards ensuring ideological clarity and service-oriented leadership across our ranks. The NEC has identified the objectives of political education as a cornerstone of our organisational renewal. First and foremost, every member of the ANC must be educated about our rich history, vision, principles, values, ethical and ideological orientation and policies. This foundational knowledge will empower our members and leaders with the analytical tools and practical skills necessary to become effective activists and agents of fundamental change within society. Additionally, through dedicated efforts in organising and continuous training, we aim to transition from merely quantitative membership to cultivating high-calibre activists and cadres, individuals equipped with distinct qualities and skills suitable for advancing each phase of the NDR. The NEC resolved to ensure the successful implementation of this political education programme and several priorities have been established in this regard. The first priority is the rollout of our compulsory mass political education initiative, commencing in November twenty twenty-four and running through June twenty twenty-seven, which will engage the entire membership of the ANC in person at their respective branches. This will be followed by the induction of newly-elected structures, including the branch executive committees, regional executive committees, provincial executive committees, NEC leagues and public representatives. Other critical components will include compulsory political classes for all leaders at various levels and mandatory policy masterclasses for those in government positions. Furthermore, the establishment of joint political school programmes with other progressive parties and movements will broaden our political education scope, fostering collaboration and shared learning across the continent and beyond. By implementing these measures, the ANC seeks to equip its members to embody the values and principles of our movement and ultimately advancing the goals of the NDR and fostering a more just and equitable society. On Integrity Commission Ethics and Discipline. The National Executive Committee considered a number of outstanding reports from the Integrity Commission affecting various leaders of the ANC. The NEC accepted the recommendations of the Integrity Commission while noting that recommendations in respect of certain cases had been overtaken by events, which included those who have either died or have since left or were expelled from the organisation. The NEC approved the amendments to the Terms of Reference of the Integrity Commission. The most significant amendments relate to the establishment of an appeals panel that will consider appeals by members and leaders aggrieved by outcomes of the Integrity Commission processes and decisions. The amendments further provide for the member whose conduct is under the spotlight to be provided with an opportunity to respond to the draft report of the commission. Similarly, the final report must be shared with the individual consent. At the same time, it is submitted to the Secretary General for consideration by the NEC. The NEC equally resolved that members have a right to take the reports of the Integrity Commission on review should they elect to do so. This will ensure alignment of the Integrity Commission processes with the rules of natural justice, which are an integral part of our jurisprudence. However, it was emphasised that the Integrity Commission and its work is not essentially about upholding the laws of the country but rather an appeal to a higher bar on leadership and membership obligations with regards to ethical conduct. It was noted that in some of the cases, no law of the country may have therefore necessarily been violated but rather that the conduct itself lent to undermining the public perception of the ANC as a leader of society and thereby bringing the organisation into disrepute. In doing so, the Integrity Commission will not seek to be legal punitive but rather corrective to ensure compliance with the ethical conduct dispelled out in the Terms of Reference, as well as the high premium of expectation on all leaders of the ANC with regards to their public and private conduct. Matters of ill-discipline, to the extent that the constitution and other policies of the ANC have been violated, will continue to belong to the realm of the disciplinary committee, whilst violating the laws of the country have additional dimension of facing the courts of law. The NEC mandated the Secretary General to proceed with speed in establishing the independent panel. On approach to leadership. The NEC noted that ANC leadership issues have recently come under the spotlight in public discourse. This situation is further fuelled by some comrades who, upon election, immediately engage in leadership contestations for the next conference. Such actions destabilise the organisation's structures and detract from the focused implementation of both our electoral mandate and the resolutions of national conferences. The NEC stressed that the challenges arising from the twenty twenty-four electoral outcomes, characterised by the NEC as a strategic setback to the national democratic revolution, require all members to adopt a disciplined approach to leadership matters at every level of the organisation. In response, the NEC resolved that a guiding framework on leadership issues and processes should be developed, circulated to all structures and discussed. Once adopted, this framework will guide leadership processes at branch, regional, provincial and national levels. That document will be developed closer to the conference in twenty twenty-seven. The ANC's Electoral Committee, elected by Comrade Khalima Mutlante, will be tasked with examining the influence of money in leadership elections. The NEC further resolved to establish a standing committee to investigate leaks of NEC and NWC information to journalists and third parties. This permanent committee will conduct forensic audits of information leaks by NEC and NWC, involving internal ANC decisions and discussions. And in most instances, these discussions and decisions distorted. The ANC have got an obligation and a responsibility to defend itself against distortions from faceless sources masquerading as credible to the media. So this decision will be done, will be implemented to defend equally the integrity of ANC information. Because the ANC speaks for itself and it does not speak through third parties. In the recent past, we have heard a number of fictitious meetings of the ANC that were reported to the press, that never took place, with fictitious decisions that were also reported to the press, that undermines the standing of the ANC in terms of credibility of its decisions and communication of its decisions. This is done, albeit the fact that through our spokespeople and all those who are entrusted with the responsibility to communicate have been available to the media at all times. But nonetheless, what becomes saucy and very attractive is faceless. The committee will be composed of experienced professionals and seasoned ANC members. Additionally, the NEC decided that no member should engage in leadership contestation. GM twenty twenty-seven, whatever, any of those tendencies, lobbying or self-promotion in the name of the ANC for any position in the lead-up to twenty twenty-seven national conference, except within the period to be determined and announced by the Secretary General. Any member violating this directive by engaging in unauthorized leadership contestation will face disciplinary action without hesitation. As such, behaviour that detracts from the critical work of implementing national conference resolutions and our electoral manifesto will be dealt with accordingly. The NEC was firm that the ANC must not be drawn into premature leadership discussions that divert focus from addressing the strategic setback to the national democratic revolution. On public representatives. The NEC has resolved to strengthen public participation and accountability by ensuring that all our elected public representatives, councillors, members of parliament and members of the provincial legislatures engage closely and regularly with community members. This engagement will involve holding regular public meetings to address local concerns, inform residents about available government services and clarify pertinent policy matters under discussions on electoral reforms. On electoral reform. The NEC approved the ANC submission to Electoral Reform Consultation Panel, which called for submissions on why, how and whether the current South African electoral system should be reformed, changed or even replaced with another one. The deadline for submissions is thirty-first October twenty twenty-four. The NEC noted that post the deadline, the panel will undertake public consultations, which will inform its final report to be tabled by the Minister of Home Affairs to Parliament in twenty twenty-five. The ANC will work with a broad front of civil society organisations and other parties to mobilise support for the electoral system reforms. It believes it believes will strengthen our democracy and accountability of public representatives in a meaningful manner. On the national dialogue. The National Executive Committee reaffirmed its alignment with the commitment made to the South African people to convene a national dialogue aimed at charting a collective path forward for our nation. This national dialogue will invite participation from all sectors of society in setting national priorities and determining the future direction of our country. Through a series of plenary sessions, working groups and familiar social dialogue processes will also utilise this opportunity to educate our citizens about our history, the constitution and the importance of public participation and civic responsibility. This national dialogue will serve as a rallying point as we prepare to commemorate the seventieth anniversary of the Freedom Charter in twenty twenty-five. We must mobilise all people and structures in every township, village and city to gather proposals and submissions that echo our... and submissions that echo our enduring commitment to freedom and justice. On socioeconomic transformation, on addressing the cost of living and expanding zero-rated goods, the A N C acknowledges the immense pressure that the rising living costs place on South African households. Recent relief in petrol prices aided by a stronger rent offers some break, but we recognize the need for deeper interventions. To address the burden of high food costs, the A N C has resolved that there is a need to expand the basket of zero-rated goods, targeting essential items to bring immediate relief to struggling families. The A N C recognizes that there is a need for engagement with food retailers and look into supply chains with the aim to prevent exploitative pricing on basic foods and to ensure accessible and affordable essentials for all citizens. This expansion of zero-rated goods is part of our broader strategy to tackle poverty and hunger, reinforce job creation and drive economic inclusivity. Through these initiatives, the A N C is committed to building an economy that directly serves the needs of the people and delivers lasting relief from the costs of living pressures. On security and social transformation, the A N C discussed the tragic deaths of children in Soweto, all under the age of ten after ingesting contaminated food bought from a local spazza shop. The A N C expressed heartfelt condolences to the bereaved families and asked the government to expedite investigations to determine the cause of these deaths and take decisive action to prevent similar tragedies in the future. The A N C commented the government's multidisciplinary approach, collaborating with all relevant authorities and departments to trace the source of contamination and hold accountable those found culpable. The A N C called on government to urgently address capacity constraints that hinder municipalities from conducting regular health inspections of food vendors, with a particular focus on spazza shops and hawkers. The recruitment and training of health inspectors must be prioritized. The A N C stressed that food sourcing by vendors selling to children must be rigorously monitored to ensure all food staffs are free from contamination without unfairly impacting those who rely on honest trade for their livelihoods. However, the A N C emphasized that protecting children's lives must take precedence. The A N C also welcomed intervention led by the Minister of Small Businesses in collaboration with provinces and municipalities to register all spazza shops, maintain an updated data base and ensure inspections by relevant authorities are regularly conducted. The A N C further commenced the swift actions taken by the ministers and their departments, including the South African Police Service in identifying and arresting some of the alleged perpetrators in this mass, in this mass um, uh, ingestion of contaminated foods from the spazza shops. We look forward to further arrests and the successful prosecution of those who have committed these heinous crimes. And then yesterday, it was announced that the, the, this thing we call the poison, it's called os, 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 os gophosphate or something. I don't know what is it called, but uh, the minister announced yesterday the name of what we call the poison that has been used and found in some of the local areas. Um, the A N C further commanded the police and everyone else for a job well done. Geopolitical issues on international work, the A N C further recognizes that South Africa will assume the championship of the G twenty in December, 2024 and will recognize the centrality of this opportunity to advocate for the interest of developing nations and address pressing global challenges such as economic inequality, climate change and sustainable development. Our leadership will focus on fostering collaborations, ensuring that Global South is heard as we emphasize the importance of equitable global governance. The A N C reaffirmed that it continues to place our continent at the center of our foreign policy, while also recognizing the need to communicate more about South Africa, its progress, aspirations and goals. Will persist in supporting the implementation of the African Continental Free Trade Area and other initiatives outlined in Agenda 2063. The A N C reaffirmed that South Africa and the A N C remain steadfast on the path of solidarity and justice for the Palestinian people. Our nation's legal and diplomatic teams recently presented our submission to the International Court of Justice in support of the case we have brought against the state of Israel for the crimes of genocide that it continues to perpetrate against the Palestinian people in Gaza. The A N C calls on the international community to note the concerning intensification of the onslaught against the people of Gaza and more recently against the people of Lebanon. We must intensify our calls for immediate ceasefire, the release of all hostages, the provision of urgent humanitarian assistance and the initiation of negotiation towards a just and lasting settlement. On sixteen days of activism, the A N C resolved that as we approach the sixteen days of activism, the A N C and the Women's League branches must utilize this period to focus on gender-based violence and femicide. It is imperative that victims have access to services and are supported in court proceedings. Furthermore, we must promote initiatives that educate men and boys against toxic masculinity and the use of violence as a means of problem solving. On the January eight celebrations, the A N C noted that the January eighth rally will be held in Cape Town in the province of the Western Cape and that preparations are well underway. Additionally, the A N C acknowledged that preparations for the 2025 National General Council will be a key highlight in the organization's work, driving renewed focus on accelerating service delivery. The A N C emphasized that service delivery, particularly in areas such as water, roads and sanitation, remains the top priority. It called on the police to implement decisive interventions to stop criminal acts of extortion, which undermine local entrepreneurship and local economic development. This includes addressing instances of sabotage, targeting water infrastructure, often used to justify water tank attenders. In conclusion, the A N C emphasizes the importance of unity and discipline and disciplined engagement as we navigate these critical periods. The A N C must remain steadfast in its mission to serve the people of South Africa and fulfill the promises of the national democratic revolution. In the spirit of Oliver Tambo, we commit to ensuring that our renewal program reflects the highest ideals of the A N C and meets the demands of our time. The special A N C meeting has set, has set for us a resolute course to address the challenges ahead, to guard the A N C jealously and to continue our historic mission of saving the people. Thank you.
Thank you very much, S G. At this point, I would like to turn to yourselves, members of the media, for questions. I will start here, News twenty four, followed by Sunday World and then S A B C. Please proceed. Yes. Thank you very much, Sunday World.
Thanks, S G. Maybe before I start my questions, I know the investigation of leaks. It's a nice thing that we have finished this. But anyway, it's fine. It's fine. And maybe to add to, to, to some tenders, a question about the motivation for, for membership, S G. So what is the actual criteria as it relates to the majority? So after what you mentioned, what happens? And also, what is it that the A N C is looking for in this motivation matter? And also just how practical is this whole thing? Because Hutaz who wants to join A N C for local reasons, but you can't write motivation letter. I'm his friend, I can write and, and motivation letter. You have a Hutaz who is according to respect that A N C is looking for them, a local Hutaz gets accepted as a member, but he actually doesn't write motivation letter. So the practicalities of this and the criteria and how do you make sure that the person who potentially wrote the letter is actually the person who wrote the letter? And then on the Integrity Commission appeals, and then who, who are they? Like what is the criteria of the people who are going to constitute this panel? We say that they are going to be around, who are, who are they? Like what kind of people is the A N C looking for? And maybe to have any need to write some values to ask that question. And also maybe to add some tenders, a point also on this, on that aspect. Is this actually back then, the Integrity Commission that was actually took this job? If you want to add a watchdog to the Integrity Commission, was if they're doing a right job, it shouldn't be anyone who's a creep, yeah, but it looks like this overwhelming, disrespected or, 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 yeah, disregard of what the A N C does such that now you feel a history, another board, which probably there's one on, and then there's another board, you know? So just that thinking behind the, from the establishment of this, this for a panel, a G lady. What, what is the current membership? You spoke about the planning numbers for the A N C. Do you have the numbers about the current status of it in terms of nationality and provinces? Which province is bigger, which region is bigger? I'm, I'm probably thinking that a T W is probably no longer the biggest region given the outcomes of the previous strategic setback. And also maybe, S G, on the strategic setback, it's just something I've been pondering on for the longest time, since the legalization of the term. What, what is so strategic about losing the rights? I get pretty confused, but it's simple to find that terminology for the strategic setback was losing to me, it's not strategic. It's, it's, it's bad to lose, so. I just, I, I feel like there needs to be an explanation on what is strategic about this electoral loss.
Thank you. I was looking for your hand to go up, giving the, you've been cracking in laughter. Almost, almost that you're disrupting your fellow colleague over there. Over to you, S F B C, and then I will come back to Sunday Times.
There are some there, and then we shall also be asking you, S G. What is the basis of doing these divisions of leaks? Are you, is it part of order also on media freedom and the country? What is the trust of the public? Also, you pride yourself as a governing party of ensuring that the media freedom is within the country? And it goes back to the days of Mr. Jackson, who was from Austin Place of the Media Appeals Tribune. Are you, in a way, in a way, do you think that it comes with nice ways of clever, of clever down on media freedom that is there within the media space and proximity that journalists can enjoy with chatting with some of your A N C, P B C and other national political leaders? Then secondly, on the info of the constituencies of 2027, there is a good brother here. And then one individual, he referred to the deputy president of the A N C, Paul Shipp, Paul Masha David, Friday. And then there are tea parties where he said that when Paul the Paul is ready to contest as the president of A N C, why wouldn't you make such a resolution when your own deputy president and members of your officials and your own party have very disciplined and more ahead than you, uh, a figure in Balula, twenty twenty seven, the G M twenty seventy seven or Paul Masha David twenty twenty seven? Who's going to listen to you when your own second in command is complaining? Then lastly, on the issues of the provinces, is there any uniformity when it comes to these local governments that you constitute? It seems that if you are more than anything, everyone has whatever they have, is there uniformity?
Thank you very much. Uh, S G, I'll take the next one. Okay, Sunday Times.
Ask a question. Um, maybe, um, I don't know, it's a Sunday Times, maybe just to, I don't know, I'm not sure of media freedom and clever down on things. S G, are you, are you going to be willing to have this phone? How are you going to do this? There's popping acts and all of those things would not be infringing on people's privacy. And then second one, did you, did the A N C decide to discuss what happened to the two provinces that were hammered at the elections, being K Z N and Houdin? Did the A N C decide to discuss what, what should be taking place there? Well, I remember there was a notion that you had to go visit both K Z N and Houdin again, but there was a view that perhaps the structure there should be either expanded or reinforced or overhauled. Did, did you go into your discussions? And then lastly, S G, there is a, with a notion that the Integrity Commission has complicated to the premium of that she should X or fire one of the M, M, M N C's, their Florida response that, um, owing to the allegations of the E P S. Did this come up in your, in the, in the report back from the Commission? And did the A N C take a decision like that?
All right, thank you very much. All right, we will then take S G. And if there are other questions, we will come back and have the second round.
Thank you very much for the questions. Um, News twenty four. Will people sit down and write essays? The A N C process in terms of membership constitutionally allows for membership laps. There is a period in terms of the constitution. So we are saying that it should not just be automatic, that after the lapse of membership, you just come back without undergoing a process. Um, and that process is not defined in the constitution. And that process is not defined in the constitution, but we're enhancing that you can write or you can be interviewed, because some of the people can't write in terms of our members. Why you think it's important for you to continue to be a member of the ANC? And then to deepen the understanding of members. Branches and joining the ANC is not happening at Lutuli House. People are not recruited from here. Recruitment and organizing branches is happening at the local level, at the branch work level. So the branch secretary and the branch executive are responsible for this recruitment. So they know these members. They can talk to them, engage them about why they think that it is in their interest to renew the membership of the organization. That enhances consciousness. Now we're talking about members, we don't even talk about supporters. We're talking about a person who have deliberately taken a decision that I don't just want to support, I want to join, to be a member of the ANC. So being a member of the ANC means you follow the brand, you are party to it. At the end of the expiry of your membership, you want to renew your membership. So you explain yourself. It's not a punishment in any way, but it enhances consciousness and a sense of belonging and pride into the brand of the ANC. So it's not really essays or whatever that it is, that before you join, when you are recruited, you must write. No, it's when after your membership have lapsed and all of that. So if you are a society, which we are not, we are an organization, but we operate alongside, there are certain rules that govern how members get to pride themselves with the brand that they follow. And at the same time, each organization and societies have got their own rules. So as part and parcel of the renewal, because we're a political force with clear mission and objectives, it is important that we must continue to revive the consciousness of the members of the ANC. Yes, people, when they are affected in terms of the integrity commission, they recuse themselves, including the president. So when we're discussing the integrity commission, he recused himself, so he was not there. So I'm just giving you an example. So if you are affected and you are a member of the NEC, you recuse yourself, but other people are not members of the NEC. So the NEC discuss their issues in their absence. In terms of the latter for motivation, I think I've covered the point which my one day also is raising, which I'm coming to his questions. We have covered that particular question in terms of, it's not necessarily something like, it is a prerequisite before you join again, but it is important in reapplying for your membership, consciousness must be enriched in a particular way. So that, that's what important. Criteria of the panel, we will appoint the panel among the best of the ANC, who are experienced, who are veterans of the organization. And the panel, it's a decision of the national conference that we must establish a panel. All what we have done this past weekend was to agree that that panel is part of the resolutions of the conference, that it must now be established. It's not a new structure, it's a structure of appeal on matters of integrity, the same as on matters of discipline. If the disciplinary committee has found you guilty, you can apply for appeal in the NTC. So integrity at the conference, the issue was that there is no recourse. How do we engage with the decisions of the integrity commission? Long before they come to the NEC, because the NEC is the final arbiter, where you can appeal and the national conference, not even the NEC is the final arbiter. Let myself correct, it is the national conference where you can appeal your membership if you are expelled and so on. You can go up to the national conference to, to appeal. So in this instance, the appeal panel is for the matters of the integrity commission. So that is what it is therefore. It is not a watchdog, therefore, it's not a watchdog, it's not looking over the integrity commission. A watchdog is something else actually. A watchdog in meaning, it is something that oversee the other structure in terms of reviewing its decisions and so on. So the ANC, what it does, it enhances its own checks and balances in order to give members a fair chance to, to hearing and so on. But also integrity commission is to educate people, because other people go to the integrity commission and then they conflate ethics with acts of criminality, you know? A, a simple conduct can be an unethical conduct that bring the ANC in disrepute. So that's what the integrity commission is judging, you know? It's not like DC that you have committed acts of criminality and all of that, of course, which have got an impact on the integrity of the ANC, and then you go through the DC and decisions are taken and all of that. Here in this instance is that it is alleged you have done this thing, you explain yourself, but are you aware that the actions that you have taken have affected the ethical standing of the ANC in society? And therefore, we think for you to correct, you have to undergo the following things. There's a lot of things we still need to improve in terms of the integrity commission, because these are uncharted waters. The set of things that are defined as acts of ethical conduct, misconduct, and what are those? So we have to improve going forward in terms of the work of the integrity commission. The strategic setback, it means that you have not lost power, but you don't have unfettered majority. That's what it means. So it's a, it's a strategic setback in a sense that you still have got a hold over power, even though not hundred percent. Meaning, it's a recognition that you've got a, a largest party, which is a difference from a majority, overwhelming majority, unfettered majority. That's what it means. So it means you cannot forsake that little that you've got in the context of many. If the ANC did not have the largest majority, do you think all these parties will work with the ANC? In the words of another leader, they will surgically remove the ANC from power. And the reason why we, we are not talking to anyone with a cap in the hand is because we are the largest party. And at the same time, the reason why we are not going to the back benches is because we'll become the biggest opposition. And we will have forsaken six million people who still believe that continue to govern in this country. We still want you, we follow your policies. We would have betrayed them and that just surrendered power in that sense. So safeguarding power meant that you've got to take particular steps with the recognition that this is not entirely a loss, but it is a setback, although it's strategic, a setback in a, in a, in a, in a sense. So some killer investigations on leaks, are we not clamping down on, 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 we're not, we're defending the integrity of the NEC. It is wrong for a faceless source constipated with factionalism, overeating factional politics and constipated to distort the ANC at the highest level of the NEC. We communicate this resolution, there is somebody who's constipated there, and then he says, no, that is not true, and is the most trusted. It's the most trusted. And they give you, you see, when we give people documents in the meeting, those documents are subjected to discussion, they are not resolutions. What is a resolution is what I'm reading here as a statement of the NEC. What I presented to the NEC in the diagnostic report cannot be quoted as a resolve, it's an analysis, which has been subjected to a process of discussion. So the faceless source will go to a document, lift things that have been processed and not decisions of the ANC and give them to the journalist. They don't give you this resolution, the faceless sources. They don't say, no, we resolved that so and so must be expelled. No, they say, no, there was a long debate, he was not expelled, it was fifty fifty. That's what, that's what they tell you. So when I come and brief the nation and the branches that, no, so and so is expelled, there is a headline I hate before I come to explain the decisions that says, no, there was actually no decision, the NEC was split in between. And I mean, I come here, I look like Ito, Ginge and all of that. So the ANC's integrity in terms of is undermined by faceless sources who've got no shame of themselves and they are standing in the organization. We can't blame the media for that. The media can't be blamed for working with faceless sources, that's how you operate. But members of the ANC, my self-respect, what tools are we going to use to engage? That's our secret also. That one is our secret, but we're going to engage. And we have explained to you publicly that we'll use forensic means to determine who in our ranks have decided to work with the media. And others even go further to brief the opposition. That's it. It's better the media, but opposition is another thing about the ANC and all of that. Now, I was in the national executive committee, there were leaks from Saturday, Sunday about the outcome of the NEC. Ramaposa cleared and the integrity commission terms of reference, whatever enriched. Before that meeting, I said to you, we'll deal with integrity, commission reports. And two, I said to you that we will finalize terms of reference. So, which were not finalized, now they are finalized. I'm meeting with the integrity commission sometime this week when I come back from Cape Town to give them a report of the NEC in detail, what have we resolved, which cases have we dealt with and all of that. And so that, that's what we will be dealing with. So it's not undermining freedom of the press. What we're doing has got nothing to do with the press. It has got something to do with people undermining the communication strategy of the ANC and the standing of the ANC in society by way of miscommunication, distorting decisions of, of the ANC. If I'm a journalist and Mbalula is your source as the secretary general, why wouldn't you write? I mean, the SG is leaking, we are about, is leaking to Hutazo. When we challenge you, you are going to say, I stand by my source.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the law protects you, that is freedom of the press. There's nothing we can do about you, you are protected because you will tell only your editor. Now, we will never know who's the source. So we can't sit with people mask riding as leaders and then which are expected to have impeccable credentials to respect their organization and yet they release information. So we can't, we can't allow that. And of course, you are right, they think that in their mind, we will not find them because there's poppy act and all of that. We will teach them that every party, even if it's a security campaign anywhere else, when it is attacked, it has got the right to use any measure in the law to defend itself. There's no body will come here to Lutuli House and tell me if you leak the decisions of our meetings and I found you. Through the law means that I must not defend the ANC. The national conference is going to ask a question. What did you do to defend the ANC? Members of the ANC don't like these leaks because they themselves are not in the NEC. So members whom they've elected to lead are the ones who show that they've got no integrity. Actually, they elected the wrong people. When we, we avail ourselves of the record, on the record, that's my language role. And if the media doesn't find us on an issue, it's another story. That comment is sought even on difficult questions. When journalists wake us up and say this and that, even if you don't like the question, as a media person of the ANC, you cannot have feelings. They can ask you things that you think that they are irrelevant and all of that. You can't have feelings, you are a communicator, you must have shock absorbers. Even if they can ask you that, I think that you people are stealing. We are even more scared alone today. But you must have shock absorbers to say, what do you mean? Can you write down your questions, I can answer them? And then that is it. And we are equally not obligated to answer everything based on our, on our, on our, it is our prerogative that we exercise. It's a media strategy that every party or individuals actually follow. Mashatila's remarks, we have discussed that with the DP. Those, you interviewed him before the NEC decision, now decision of the NEC is here. And DP was actually clearer in terms of his answer. You asked him about this question. We have one, who DP? And he answered a proper question, he answered properly, he said that when, when they want me, I will raise my hand. And then, and then that was it. In terms of the ANC rules now, directive, we don't want that. No leader should be answering such questions. Every ANC member must be preoccupied with service delivery, cost of living of the people and all of that. This item will come. It's not like it is fast, people are not discussing leadership, they are not doing anything. It cannot be our agenda now and 2027, cannot be. We still have got an election to win in 2026, we've got a program of action to implement of rebuilding the ANC. If we now preoccupy the ground and everywhere else and our membership with conference and leadership, that is personal aggrandizement, which have got nothing to do with what we have characterized as a setback in this movement we are in. Where are we? We have lost the biggest majority, yet the, the biggest priority of the ANC is who becomes a leader. No, we can't allow that. We have drawn the line. That line is going everywhere. You speak, was a war, yeah, we attend to you, wherever, wherever it happens, youth league, women's league, veterans league, nobody is allowed. We will communicate this also to our allies and so on, but nobody is, is allowed members of the ANC to deal with this matter. We have dealt with that issue with the DP, we discussed and he explained and I understood perfectly. We understood each other and I don't think there was something wrong with what Paul said in terms of that answer, but it could be used to fuel the succession debate in the ANC, which we don't want. Not that it will not be there, not that people in the ANC are not discussing this, this matter, they are. The critical question is that we must open a discussion. The critical question is that we must open a discussion at the right time. And we said that discussion will be guided by a political perspective. Now, we are embarking on renewal. We are embarking on rebuilding of structures. That's what this National Executive Committee have directed. And this is what we must implement. There's not going to be another meeting to conceptualize a program of renewal and rebuilding. It is there, it is concluded. The next meeting of the NEC is to get a report from the SG. How far are we with the rebuilding? What is happening with the rebuilding? Membership, political foundation? What are we doing with all of these things we have agreed? Integrity Commission, what is happening? Are we consistent now? We've got terms of reference. Are we doing the right things in the way we are doing them? So our job at Luthuli House is to oversee the revolution of organizational renewal at the highest level in the ANC. And the Commission of Organizational Renewal also must function to oversee these programs are actually implemented. Uniformity on coalitions. Unfortunately, Samgela, you can never reach uniformity. You get into another place, you find that, look, first, our guiding principle in terms of coalitions is that the party with majority must lead everywhere, okay? And then you go and talk to political parties, they don't, they don't agree with that. They don't agree with that. You've got an option to be an opposition and all of that. And then they say, no, we agree, but we want mayorship. A party with no majority. And then you are the biggest party. And then parties that are supposed to be working together for stability, bigger parties, which is what should happen in a democracy. A party that have emerged, one and two, must work together to govern. They don't find each other. Like we don't find each other with the DA in the coalition talks in Haute at the local level. But if the ANC and DA were to come together in a coalition, work at the local level and the IFP and everybody like it happened in KZN, will you have instability then? No. There will be water. Council will sit on time because the two contending powers are governing. And then there will be services. Mayors won't change week in and week out. Now, with small political parties, there is a risk. It's what we call, not even a grand, is it a grand coalition? Yeah. A grand coalition has got risks. You get blackmail there. By somebody, you can't leave. Blackmail beyond blackmail to the point of abuse. You can't leave because you don't have partners. You've got this person. This is what others wanted to lock us in. And we said, no. Because today we have a GNU that we have with all the political parties that are... You see, Agbongu, you have come with all the nefarious intentions to disrupt this press conference. But I must tell you, you won't succeed. So, yeah. So Kotato, the last, the last point is Kotato. The leaks matter, I've addressed it. ANC is not rogue. Won't do legal staff or intelligence. We don't have that capacity. But we can't do things like even legal firms do legally. Employ forensic people to help us defend ourselves against the wrongness and distortion of our, our views. And that is it. And I can see your look, you are thinking about your phone. And that you are, you are, you are an independent journalist. So you can't be tapped. No, we can't in terms of the poppy act and all of that. We don't even have such powers. We don't do that. We investigate how these things actually happen. And there are many mechanisms to do that. Did we discuss KZN and Haute? We did not. We are going to discuss them in the last NEC of the year. We are supposed to go back to Haute and KZN to finalize our discussions with them about what we have gathered on the ground and what we believe must be the way forward. The reason why we did not include that discussion in the agenda is because we did not want to conflate issues. This, this NEC was methodological, clinical, straight to the point, integrity and rebuilding the ANC. So we are going to implement all of what has been agreed by the special NEC. We came from a six-day meeting where we analyzed what happened in the election. And then we summarized, we said, this is a strategic setback. And then we said that GNU is not an end in itself. It's a tactical maneuver. It can actually collapse or it can withstand its time for five years. So the possibility that the GNU can collapse or other political parties in the GNU, let me not say GNU collapse, that other political parties can leave the GNU, it's high. Not GNU. That other political parties can choose to leave. They can. But GNU will not collapse. To an agreement on any other thing. Or you want anything that you believe in to run supreme. You must win power. You must win not even two-thirds, above fifty percent of the electorate. There's nobody who governs here, outright majority. We are the largest party, must be respected. But we don't go around pointing fingers and threatening partners every day. We don't do that. And we are not threatened by what other political parties do sensational and all of that in the context of the GNU. Because we've got faith and trust in our leadership. If our leadership in the GNU is veering away from the mandate we have given them, we will be the first ones to recall them. But we can't verbose and accentuate lies and slogans, sell-out and all of that. As though GNUs in their framework are constituted by allies. It's not correct. For people who are ideologically aligned. It's not correct. GNU was constituted. And then what happened is that everybody was invited. Those who came with conditions, they ejected themselves out of it. And then they left. They did not leave, they did not even come in. And that's it. So what do you want from us? I mean, Julius Malema, you know, he talks too much. And then he says, we want a GNU without the ANC before the elections. And then he's followed by his second-in-command, Floyd. Floyd says, we want to remove the ANC surgically everywhere, okay? And then they ask him as a follow-up question. Will you be prepared to work with the DA, the Freedom Front? And everybody says, all political parties, including the DA and us, we must come together and surgically remove the ANC as ambassadors. Everything that is ANC must be removed. That's Floyd, who says that. They must come together as political parties. Now, the results of the, of the elections come and they produce what they produced. Yes, the ANC below fifty percent, forty percent. Now, can they work together without the ANC? The people of South Africa refused and said that the ANC will become the bigger leader in terms of this. But according to themselves, they were going to run this country without us. And that's what they were fighting for. Malema says surgically remove. I mean, he says, we want a GNU without the ANC. Wishful thinking, it did happen, but with the ANC. And then he could not come in to it. And then they started now to invent new concepts, black front, progressive front. What's that? What's that? Black front. Black front, we can come together every time and again. We have given the Liberation Political Party with one seat in the GNU, the biggest ministry in the government. Biggest ministry that belongs to a party, I don't know of how many. If PAC had five, ten members, we would have given them two. We have given PA one ministry. PA, sports. It's just that sports make you to be on TV every day. So GAT is always there, you see, and is effective. Now, it's a pain to all of them, Gaten, McCain's. With one seat, you can think that PA have got fifteen seats. And then you've got DA with a couple of ministries that they actually have. You've got other political parties as deputy ministers participating in the arrangement of the GNU. What are we talking about here? Because all sensible people understood that this is not a melting pot. We still maintain our identity. And we knew that the DA will behave like the way it is behaving. Because they are not going to the GNU to sign off death to their political party. They will want to be seen to be meaningful in the GNU. And then that's why they claim things that they found to be happening and claim them as theirs, that we brought these things. That's not correct. We understand that, that, that quite, quite correctly. And then the last point is, have we directed the Integrity Commission? We don't have that report. That directed the Premier of Limpopo to fire Florence Ratilane. We don't have that report. We also read that report from you guys, that there is such a report. Here in my desk, it has not arrived. If it arrives, I will table it to the officials and to the NEC to take a decision. I don't have that report. So it's again the other thing I'm talking about that there are things that are communicated despite that we repart these things. And maybe I must come and address Sanev. And I must be educated about this, this phenomenon of leaking. Not that it is wrong for you, but how it affects us in terms of communication. Because the truth of the matter is that we have been distorted every day. I mean, I called Panyaza here. What comes out of the media is clear, it's a WhatsApp group gossip. That no, he came here and the score is two-zero. And then Mina was lectured by the president left and right. And that is, it's a lie. You see, now you are sitting there, you are the Secretary General of the ANC. And then here is a gossip. You decide, should I, Matlengi, should you respond to this gossip? We give it credence, what should we do? But gossips, they stick in WhatsApp groups. Those people believe each other. In WhatsApp groups, they believe each other like it's heaven. You know, we Bambi, yeah, that is the truth. But you were in the same meeting, the things that they have been reported in the WhatsApp groups are not true. Okay? So that's why I, I decided to get out of WhatsApp groups because Nandi apen. I don't just sit, I respond. Otherwise, SG is the first who's misbehaving. So I, I, I'm just proper, you see. So because my position and my office doesn't allow me to be miscommunicating or to be in twas with people and all of that. SG will lie every day, good Twitter. We are small. So I decided to get out of WhatsApp groups because Nandi apen. But Umbalula would. And then they send it to Kotato and he put it headline. Thank you very much.
Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, colleagues. I believe we have responded to... The membership? Oh, okay. Okay, that will be all. After that, we will be adjourned.
No, Zuma has appealed and that matter is dealt with in the appeals who have been kept abreast. Is obviously in a psychos mode. You can see this thing to him is a joke, that I've got two memberships and all of that. And yet, that thing he calls an organization is not an organization. It's a project. Doesn't have conferences and all of that, he knows. So this thing that has got two memberships is being dealt with in terms of the party. From our books, it's not a member. He's expelled. He's appealing. He's expulsing from the ANC. That's one, so it's not a member. The, the, the second issue about membership, the performance of our structures in terms of membership, recruitment and so on. It's a task that we believe we'll want to unveil at January eight in Cape Town. That include also the issues of state of branches and all of that. If I tell you now which is the highest province at the overall membership, of course, we are almost at one million, but it means nothing. Because that membership is undergoing a rigorous process of replenishment. So we want to treat it as a buildup to the January eight and the biggest announcements we'll make towards January eight on the work of rebuilding the ANC and the performance of our structures. And those will be rewarding in Cape Town at in January eight about their performance as good branches of the ANC in good standing. So I understand what you want, but I can only give you then, yeah, sure.